Just the floor.
Yeah, that's why I was actually like, uh, better one, so it's better than the first state. And then have to sit there, right? Doctor, they didn't have like, that's wrong. Versus the, uh, they come out and they try to make an offer. They don't care though. They get their money, they go.
You know, you have on a week for each home.
So we have the house like five.
No, no, during the day, they were sunny.
And at night, fifty-four at night. Cola. Have they had. He's going to burn. I don't think. Yeah, I think. I think he's just gonna talk about why. Okay. They're gonna go last. It's gonna be a case. It's gonna be a case. I did, yeah, you gotta think.
If there's any questions.
Usually, yeah. I think it's a question. And they also know it's like, we could be here. I don't assume. Yeah. Is that, yeah. A, um, returning efficiency. She's told me for. Right, that's very true. They wanna go back. Because it's been so. I don't say this.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, welcome to the December thirteenth planning board meeting. Uh, I'd like to call the meeting, um, open with the pledge of allegiance, please.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the recalling of the. One nation.
So, a few announcements, um, as typical, uh, the emergency exits are to your left and right. Um, restrooms are out the door and to your left. Um, if you're in attendance and you haven't, please make a, be sure to sign the attendance sheet, which is on the back table, and there are copies of any resolutions or drafts that we have available this evening that we intend to act on. Um, as well as, uh, if you need information about the planning department, um, or contact information, there's some business cards there. Um, also, uh, please turn off your cell phones or silence them for the meeting, and if there are any conversations to be had, either before, during, or after a presentation, please take them outside, um, far enough back or close the doors that, um, it doesn't disrupt the, uh, other folks that are presenting. Thank you. Uh, we have meeting minutes for last month.
November.
November. Um, does anyone have any comments for Lisa on the meeting minutes?
Nope.
Joe? Yeah, you're all set? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for approval of those meeting minutes.
I'll move.
I'll move. Joe, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carried four zero. Uh, Ernie, by the way, sends his regards. He, he is recovering and says he will be back. So, um, wish him Merry Christmas and, uh, happy holidays from all of us. Uh, we have received, um, a couple of items of correspondence, both referring to, um, ten eighty-six Strong Road subdivision. Um, we do not intend to take any action on that application this evening, other than to declare the town planning board as lead agency, as we've discussed previously, and so I don't intend to, um, open up the floor for public comment at this time. There will be opportunities at future meetings for that as well. Um, board and committee updates. Mike, do you have any thing you'd like to? Okay. Um, we'll talk about the town board action on ten eighty-six Strong during the meeting. Um, Kim?
Your next meeting will be January tenth, starting with a public hearing for the McGuire site plan at eighty-fifty State Route two fifty-one. The applicant is requesting approval to construct a twenty-three thousand square foot parking lot addition, including landscape buffer sidewalks, a new tenant entrance, and two curb cuts off of Old Dutch Road. You saw this previously as part of a previous application for them. This is the piece that they withdrew off of that application, so they're coming back. And then that's it, unless there's any carryovers for tonight.
Impressive. Thank you, Kim. Any questions for Kim? All right. I saw a few folks come in, um, that did not visit the table behind us. Uh, if you all could, please sign in, um, that you're attending the board meeting. I would appreciate it. Um, if you're here for ten eighty-six Strong Road application, um, we are not taking action, uh, this evening on that, except to declare the town's planning board as lead agency, and so we will not be opening up the floor for public comment, as there will be, um, future opportunities to do that. The public hearing will still remain open, just for y'alls information, as you, uh, may have missed that announcement at the beginning. So, um, we do have a first public hearing, uh, item this evening is, uh, the tenant geotherm application. Public hearing is open for that, and the applicant is requesting approval to install a geothermal heat pump on the parcel, and as we understand it and have seen in the applicant's paperwork, um, there is a change in that site plan, so. Are you folks ready?
Yeah.
Come on up.
All right. I'm Jesse. Uh, do you want me to just explain the changes to the plan?
Just identify yourself again, um, for the record.
I'm the project manager for geotherm, and, uh, we are proposing to do a vertical system now, which is quite a bit different from the original proposal, which was gonna be a horizontal ground loop. Um, so the new site plan basically limits us to just that small area that you see in red, and there's five vertical bores that'll be drilled in that area, and then the line going to and from the house, um, there's a bunch of, like, thicket and brush, it's all invasive species that are there, that we're just gonna come right through into the house. Um, so it's a pretty significant change to actually limit the amount of destruction to the landscape there and the amount of surface that we're touching with the heavy equipment.
Interesting choice of words, but. So, um, yeah, I think you, you heard some concern from many of us on the board regarding how much you would be disturbing the land, how close you were to the road right-of-way. I think there was a.
Utilities.
Utility easements there, the driveway, trees, et cetera, so, um, yeah, open up the floor. Al, any questions?
I think you hit on, I mean, our concerns were really around the geometry and potential conflicts there, so I think you've come back with a good solution there and.
Good.
Confident that it'll work.
Great.
Ken?
I, I agree. Um, the question I have is.
With your mic on?
Sorry. I, I agree. The question I have is, um, were you able to establish, um, what that easement was that we spoke about last time? Were you able to confirm what that is?
So, we called in, um, a, a design ticket with eight-one-one, and nothing came back in, in that drainage area between the road and the, the twenty-five feet from the center of the road right there, and it's just like, uh, basically when you're there, it's basically a ravine, and they got nothing, nobody came back to me with anything that's buried in there.
Um, so, does that mean you're going into the easement area?
No. No, we're not.
You're able to stay out of the easement area?
Able to stay out of the easement, yeah. Yeah, if you pull up the, the other picture again there, um, the one before that, the area that's highlighted in green.
Uh-huh.
Is pretty much the perimeter of the, it's like a swell right there, and, and then there's a, if you look at, I guess if I had a photo of the property, you'd see it, it kinda rises up, and all the vertical wells are gonna be up on the elevated area, out of the ditch completely.
Well, you'll, you'll be outside of the easement area then, and outside of the right-of-way of the street.
Yes.
Okay. Then my final question would be, uh, will you, um, will you have a surveyor give you some type of alignment out there, so you know where that line is to stay away from it?
We can do that if we need to.
I mean, it's, it's nice to use planning maps, as you've done, which is really good in conveying the information that you've done, but I think in order to have certainty that it's going in the right place, I think a surveyor should give you that line, that, of that easement, so you know exactly where it is and can keep out of it. Just because eight-one-one didn't get back to you, um, that doesn't mean there isn't something in there that is of importance.
No, they did get back to me.
Well, they did.
They did get back to me, yes. Yeah, they got back to us with a map of the area, and it showed nothing in that ditch.
Well, I, I think the safe play is to stay out of it, as you're doing, and I think the further safe play is to just have someone give you the lines, so you're confident that when you're putting these vertical wells in, that they're in the right place, and you won't have to address it ever again.
Okay.
That would be my recommendation for a condition.
Yeah, good for, um, support, yeah, okay. Joe, any questions?
I'm, I'm curious, how deep does it go?
So, these are gonna be a hundred and fifty feet deep, five of them.
Oh.
So, we can, we've done wells as, as deep as five hundred feet, but it depends on the area and how deep it is to bedrock.
Does it take different equipment, then, to move the fluid, if you're going down and up that much? It's the same?
Same.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I got.
Okay, and, um, likewise, I'm very much, uh, in favor of your change. Uh, like I said, it, it seems to be much less disturbance, it is much less disturbance, and it was addressing the concerns, I think, that we all had, and it sounds like your homeowner also had similar concerns after our last meeting, so.
Yeah, and with the survey, I guess my question would be, um, just to get them out there, just to identify, where does the right-of-way end?
Yeah, I think you could call a surveyor and just ask them to give you a couple of laugh along that line for guidance.
Okay.
That's all you would need.
Yeah, they could paint it or laugh or whatever, so.
Okay.
But it's, it's really, I, I think the other map shows that it's a specific dimension as reference to the property line, so the surveyor should be able to relate it to the property line and stake it out accordingly.
Okay.
Then you're all set.
Sounds good.
Okay, um, hearing nothing else from the board, and Wes has some comments.
I do have, I do have some comments, thanks, Joe. So, we did take a look at the updated plans that you provided. The footprint is, appears to be a lot better situation for the property compared to the last one. We agree with that. So, we did provide a letter just today on, on the updated plans, and we do have some concerns. Uh, we're not looking to be a, a roadblock for your project, but we just wanna, I think, kind of echo a little bit of what Mr. Harter described, in terms of proximity to the right-of-way and, and this potential easement. So, um, the thing that we identified with this road, Peepers Hollow Drive, if that's what it's called, um, it looks like it's a sixty-foot, sixty-foot wide right-of-way, right? So, if it's a sixty-foot wide right-of-way, and if we assume that the pavement, the center line, the center of the pavement is in the center of that sixty-foot wide right-of-way, thirty feet off of, off of that is gonna be very close to the edge of the southernmost, um, drill pits.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, you know, without, without having a, a survey or an engineered stamp drawing to confirm the location of that property line, um, we've made some recommendations. And also, so with this particular easement, your other map describes that easement as a, an easement to RG&E and Rochester Telephone Company, if not, not as a drainage easement. Um, if we could flip, would you mind flipping to the other sheet? Thanks, Susie. So, there's, there's actually a call-out right here on the survey map, which describes that that easement is to RG&E and RTC, and we're talking about this easement along Peepers Hollow Drive. So, and right there, you'll see that it, it does describe it's a sixty-foot wide public right-of-way, so we wanna be sure that any work that's done out there is outside of the town's right-of-way and outside of that easement, just in case there is, happens to be something there, whether it's gas, um, or electric, or maybe there's nothing there, as you've already called in a ticket.
Mm-hmm.
Um, to try to identify. Um, so, three of this, I just wanted to list off three of the suggestions here that we thought you could also use as a condition in your, in your approval. So, we suggest that the site plan include, include a note indicating that the system shall be installed outside of the Peepers Hollow Drive right-of-way and outside of the ten-foot wide RG&E and RTC easement, and we suggest that the site plan include a note indicating that the contractor notified DigSafe New York for a utility stakeout in advance of commencing work. It sounds like that's already been done, and that the vertical bore holes be staked out prior to construction and installation, and that the town highway superintendent and/or town code enforcement officer can perform a site visit to review said stakeout of those vertical bore holes, bore holes, to confirm the system is installed outside of the, outside of the right-of-way. Um, I, and we do have a, an updated, uh, draft of the, of the resolution that incorporates those. If you don't have it in front of you, I have it on my computer, and I can share it on the screen, but that's.
I think Lisa realized that she only got one of the two sides of the resolution, so.
Oh, she went to go grab?
Yes, I think she went to go grab it, but yeah, if you wanna share that on the screen, that, or, uh, at least share it with Lisa, you can read it.
And I'd appreciate any feedback that you might have on, on LaBella's comments with regard to the, the right-of-way and.
So, I was gonna make the comment, whereas you were talking about the, the sixty-foot right-of-way, right now, he's got a line showing twenty-five feet from the center line of the road to that edge of that draven, drainage easement, which you said is also referred to differently as the, was it RG&E and?
RTC.
RTC, so, that's not very far from where this couple of those wells are.
Correct.
And going that far, you're gonna need the surveyor to delineate that easement, you're also gonna need the surveyor to show the edge of the right-of-way, the highway boundary, which is further into your, to the property, the tenant's property.
Mm-hmm.
There's some monumentation out on, it, it appears, based on this survey map, that there are some monuments out there that would identify the edge of the right-of-way.
Okay.
Um, that might be helpful.
Um, so, my question to you, Wes, is there a minimum offset from the right-of-way, where these wells should be kept from?
To my knowledge, there's probably nothing in the town code that requires a particular setback for, for these wells.
Yeah.
And as long as it's outside, I don't, I don't think the town would object if it were outside of the right-of-way.
Oh, one foot? I mean, that seems awfully close for a, you know, I don't know how big the wells are, like six or eight inches or something?
About eight inches, yeah.
Eight inches, okay. I would say you'd wanna be two or three feet at least, um, to be conservative.
And I just wanted to follow up too, with, with our concern, right? This particular image, it shows those wells being outside of the right-of-way, right? We don't necessarily have a, the drawing, or the depiction on this drawing is, isn't necessarily to scale, and it appears to, it looks to me to be just a little bit different with the aerial photograph.
Yeah.
It's, it's really hard to tell, because they're, they're not scaled drawings, and I just wanna be, even though they've shown it here outside the right-of-way, based on the aerial photograph, it, it appears very close, so we just wanna be cautious in that regard.
I just have one follow-up comment to make. If the, if the right-of-way is sixty, and the center line of the road is approximately at the center line of the right-of-way, and half of that's thirty, plus ten for the easement, means that you're forty foot off the center line, right? So, you gotta go at least forty foot from physical center line, not using a surveyor, just discussing it right now.
Yep.
Be even in the ballpark, and probably you might wanna add another five foot to that, just for good measure. If you're looking at twenty-five, I'd say forty-five.
Ten feet in addition to the sixty-foot right-of-way?
Well, half of the sixty-foot right-of-way is thirty. If I add ten, it's ten.
Why do we have to have ten on top of the thirty?
I don't think Scott. I don't think it's additive.
You're looking at.
I don't think so either.
You got center line to edge of easement is twenty-five feet.
Oh, okay.
And, and I think that easement is from the town, it's not, unless it's like an overlapping.
Twenty-five feet from the center of the road is an industry standard for everything that we do.
I guess, like, I can't really see that survey map up there. Does that survey map show the easement?
Here.
The survey map shows a ten-foot wide easement beyond the edge of the right-of-way.
Yeah, so that's exactly what I'm saying.
Yeah, I see, I see your point, right?
You're, you're not at twenty-five, you're at forty.
Right.
So, they're saying from the edge of the road?
No, not from the edge of pavement. The edge of the right-of-way is different than the edge of pavement.
So, they have ten feet beyond the sixty on, on each side?
RG&E, so the right-of-way, if, could we go back to the aerial photograph?
That's like way far into his property, if that's the case.
Forty, you're not at twenty-five.
Yeah, it is, it is ten feet from the edge of, the right, from the right-of-way line.
The edge of, the edge of the right-of-way is not the edge of pavement.
No, it's.
No.
Thirty from the center of the road.
The edge of the right-of-way is probably.
Twenty-five is not right. Yeah.
So, they're saying that they, there's an easement that goes basically forty feet from the center of the road?
If you wanna think of it that way, yes, forty feet from the center of the road, center of the road is occupied by the town's property, the town's right-of-way.
Okay.
Which is thirty feet, and then an additional ten feet is encumbered by.
Utilities.
The utility easement.
Okay.
So, forty feet, you would have to be forty feet from the center line of the road, and that's assuming that the center line of the road is the center of the town's right-of-way.
Is there anyone from the town that can be helpful in determining what that actually is, by like going out to the site and taking a look and, you know, showing us what they have on record, and their maps and stuff like that?
You, you produced a survey map done by some surveyor, I would contact that surveyor and have him stake the line for you, but it's incumbent on the, the applicant to provide us with the correct information, so we can make, uh, you know, an intelligent decision. But, but we're giving you some pretty accurate free consulting advice right about now, so, um, I think if you went with a twenty-five foot, um, that wouldn't be a good thing. Wanna go with at least forty foot from physical center line, and that's assuming physical center line is the same as the center line of the right-of-way. Anybody see it differently than that?
Not when you direct the attention to that survey map, it shows that double-dashed right-of-way line, which is standard for a right-of-way line, and then the additional ten-foot easement is identified beyond that or within that area, so, you're right.
Are you guys looking at something different than what we have up here?
Uh, to the other survey map that you had produced with the layout of your new, I don't know if, uh, Susie can go back to that? So, that map we're looking at, the dark double-dash line, uh, you know, closest to the name Peepers Hollow, the first line in, you know, is, is the edge of your right-of-way. That'd be thirty feet from the center line of the road, and then you've got the other easement, which is a triple, uh, triple-dash line, that's an easement, that's the ten-foot easement that's identified on that same map. So, it's ten-foot wide easement to RG&E and RTC, as Wes was.
And on that one, it shows that the vertical bores are on the other side of that line?
On the outside of that, correct.
Okay.
So, if you follow that, you will be safe, but you need a surveyor to tell you where that easement line is. That's where Scott was going, and I think Wes.
And are these, um, suggestions and questions, um, gonna be emailed to us, or, 'cause I have no record of any of that stuff? So, just so.
What I could do is type up the minutes from this meeting and send them to you.
Okay, that would be helpful, yeah, 'cause to remember every detail of what we need to do.
I'd suggest that we also have a condition in here about having a licensed surveyor identify the limits of the right-of-way and easement on the property prior to doing the soil bor, your borings.
Mm-hmm.
So.
And then to have the drilling company come out, put the marks on the ground where they're gonna drill, and then have the highway superintendent, I believe, is what was.
Yeah, yeah, someone could maybe assist the highway superintendent to confirm the location of the, of the right-of-way, at least, maybe based on the monumentation that's out there, and then they could do a rough estimation of whether you're outside of the right-of-way or not.
Okay.
I think if you get a surveyor to work with you, you'll be able to take care of it. I guess I'd also recommend that the surveyor has built it.
Yeah.
And provide a record drawing.
The, the best thing on, to do that as well, is to identify where the bore holes are gonna go, and then the surveyor can stake them out, and he'll.
Confirm it.
Confirm it, and that'll show up on the new map that's produced for the homeowner.
Okay.
And here's the utility that's in the ground, here's where all these borings are, and here's where this, you know, supply line is.
Yeah.
To those borings from the house. It's, the homeowner will definitely want that.
But I think the important part of this conversation is that that other drawing, although picturesque, um, is showing twenty-five feet, which is.
Yeah, it's not correct.
A number.
Yeah. I would certainly rely on the survey map that you provided with the notes. So.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, Wes? Was that the gist of it?
Um, that's it. Well, let me, let me, maybe, typically, typically what we would prefer to see is an engineered site plan, right, that has the improvements depicted to scale that's stamped by, that's a design professional, right?
That's what we submitted, though. It wasn't, yeah, engineered site view with a stamp from a certified engineer.
What is stamped? This, this drawing?
No, um, I don't know what wasn't, if that wasn't submitted.
This is how long will it go?
This one. So, the stamp, right? So, the cover.
What about the letter, um?
Yeah, so the cover, if, if we read that carefully, the cover letter states, this, this letter report satisfying that the design is acceptable from a mechanical engineering perspective. As such, we are affixing our New York State Engineering Stamp to this letter. So, they're assuring that the design of the system is, uh, adequate for, for mechanical engineering purposes, not for site engineering, site layout, that sort of thing.
Okay.
I under, I understand, you do have a stamped letter here, and you do have a stamped, it, it appears to be a stamped drawing, but it's, it's clearly not to scale, um, and there's, there's certainly a difference in the depiction between the graphic of the survey and then the aerial. There's, there's a, they don't match up, but, you know, if we wanna work around that, if we wanna move forward and not, you know, hold this, continually, continually hold this up, we have a draft resolution that may be helpful.
Yeah, I, I think we're kind of going about it in reverse, but I agree. Um, I think at this juncture, they've been here for two meetings, and I think if the quality control is going to occur via a record drawing as built, with the participation of a licensed surveyor, then I think, I think we'll be okay.
Okay.
Yeah, right. So, the public hearing is still open for this. Um, I'll just open up the floor in case anyone has comment.
Sure.
Based on your new layout, if there's anyone in, in attendance that wishes to address the board or the applicant with any questions about the application, now's the time. Seeing none, um.
Move to close the public hearing.
Joe made the motion before my suggestion. So, Joe makes the motion to close public hearing. Do I hear second?
I'll second.
Got second, so in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, carried four zero. Public hearing is closed. We do have, uh, as Wes alluded, a draft resolution for approval, and I will read, um, the ongoing conditions as well. Wes, and I'm not sure if you're, what you had were suggesting was different than what Lisa printed out here, but, um, you can update me accordingly. So, um, for a tenant geotherm application at three forty-four Thorn Bush Drive, application number thirty S P two twenty, twenty-two, whereas the planning board made the following findings effect, and there are seven of them, including LaBella Associates' review of the site plan and letter dated December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two with comments, and the code enforcement officer's review, um, on October twentieth and December seventh, twenty twenty-two with no concerns. Whereas Town Victor Planning Board reviewed the unlisted action on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two and identified no significant impacts, thou therefore be it resolved that the project tenant geotherm will not have a significant impact on the environment, and that a negative declaration be prepared, and be it further resolved that the application of Jessica Schlosser of Geotherm, uh, New York Site Plan entitled Tenant Geotherm Drawn by Geotherm Received by the Planning Board October sixth, um, drawing dated December fifth. Is this the right date, Lisa?
I don't know if what date.
It's correct.
It's the correct date? Okay. Planning Board Application thirty S P twenty twenty-two be approved with the following conditions. Conditions to be addressed prior to chairman's signature on the site plan, uh, item one is standard, item two, that the comments in the letter dated December thirteenth from LaBella Associates be addressed. Uh, item three, that a note be added to the site plan indicating that the system shall be installed outside of Peepers Hollow Drive right-of-way and outside of the ten-foot wide RG&E and RTC easement. And number four, a note be added to the site plan indicating that the contractor notified
conditions as well. Wes, I'm not sure if you're, what you had were suggesting was different than what Lisa printed out here, but you can update me accordingly. So, "For tenant GeoTherm application at 344 Thorn Bush Drive, application number 30 SP 2022, whereas the planning board made the following findings effect, and there are seven of them, including LaBella Associates' review of the site plan and letter dated December 13th, 2022 with comments, and the code enforcement officers' review on October 20th and December 7th, 2022 with no concerns. Whereas Town Victor Planning Board reviewed the unlisted action on December 13th, 2022 and identified no significant impacts, thou therefore be it resolved that the project tenant GeoTherm will not have a significant impact on the environment, and that a negative declaration be prepared, and be it further resolved that the application of Jessica Schlosser of GeoTherm, New York, site plan entitled 'Tenet GeoTherm' drawn by GeoTherm received by the planning board October 6th, drawing dated December 5th..." Is this the right date, Lisa?
It's correct.
It's the correct date, okay. "Planning Board Application 30 SP 2022 be approved with the following conditions. Conditions to be addressed prior to chairman's signature on the site plan. Item one is standard. Item two, that the comments in the letter dated December 13th from LaBella Associates be addressed. Item three, a note be added to the site plan indicating that the system shall be installed outside of Peepers Hollow Drive right-of-way and outside of the 10-foot wide RG&E and RTC easement. And number four, a note be added to the site plan indicating that the contractor notify DigSafe New York for a utility stakeout in advance of commencing work. Ongoing conditions, number one and two, numbers one and two are standard. Number three, that the vertical bore holes be staked out prior to construction and installation, and that the town highway superintendent and/or town code enforcement officer can perform a site visit to review said stakeout to confirm that the system be, is installed outside of Peepers Hollow Drive right-of-way and the existing, and the easement identified on the survey plan. You can change the wording if you want to also indicate the utility easement. And be it further resolved that the planning board secretary distribute the planning board's approval letter. So, as modified, or if, does anyone have any comments before I ask for a vote?
Do you want to throw in a as-built or a record survey? Is that in there?
Um, well, I put in, well, it says added to a site plan. It could put on the...
One of the requirements for an ongoing condition be that...
Ongoing condition, yeah, that's where I was going with that. So it's a, be staked out by a licensed surveyor prior to construction installation, or... How would you phrase that, Scott?
That's fine.
Okay. So we can just add, and that be provided to the town. And so if you just put that up here. Lisa, okay. All right, so yes, we conclude that.
Okay.
So I'll entertain a motion for approval as amended.
I'll move.
Now moves.
Second.
Go seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried four, nothing. So should be all set. Any questions? Certainly you can talk to the town engineer through the planning department. Application number two for this evening, public hearing still open. This is for Valvoline Site Plan. The applicant is requesting approval to demolish the existing building formerly Denny's Restaurant at the corner of Main Street, Fishers, and Route 96, and build a 2,080-square-foot Valvoline Instant Oil Change. And just to note, I think we're still waiting for comments from LaBella Landscape, Town of Farmington and Fire Co-, Fire Department. Is that true? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Todd Markovich with APD Engineering, and with me tonight is Sky Hanson, also of APD Engineering, and here for a continued discussion of the proposed Valvoline at the corner of Route 96 and Main Street Fishers, and would respectfully request that the, the board consider issuance of preliminary site plan approval and final site plan approval, as well as a parking variance. Since our last appearance at this board, we have received and reviewed a number of agency comments, some of which we had received prior to the last board meeting, and some had received after. And we've also reviewed some of the board's comments with our client and have submitted a revised package back to the town as of Monday of last week. And there were, while there were a number of, of comments from the other agencies, a lot of those were relatively simple to, to adjust, and I guess what I'd like to do is kind of talk about maybe some of the more important ones, which coincidentally were the ones that the board brought up. And I guess the first one I'd like to discuss is the, the building elevation itself. At the last meeting, we proposed or we portrayed an elevation that had basically four-foot of brick on the bottom, and then an ephist material basically for the rest of the building. And some of the board's concerns were, you know, could we look at some material changes, perhaps maybe incorporate some more brick, you know, do something a little bit different. And so our client has agreed to actually remove the ephist between the four-foot lower brick section and the roof line and replace it with, with brick as well. And that would be a, a two-tone brick, and if you can see here, and I know the bore, I apologize, is not privy to this exhibit, there should be an exhibit here that kind of shows that portrayal of the, the color differences. And that would be on all sides of the, the building. In addition to that, the dumpster was basically modeling the same building previously with that stucco material. And again, we are proposing to have that upper section of that dumpster enclosure to also be brick, so they would model similarly. In addition, and as you can see on the larger screen here, or the, I'm sorry, the colored rendering, they've also incorporated on the left side of the building some, some corbeling, so there'd be some relief in that building facade itself to kind of break up that monotony of the brick. So we feel that that, that some of the, heard some of the board's concerns, brought it to Valvoline, and they felt this was a relatively good compromise. In addition to that, the board had some concerns over the number of signs per code. Two are allowed on the building. We were proposing three, one on the front, one on the right-side elevation, and one in the rear. And so again, we brought that back to the architects and to Valvoline, and they have agreed to remove the Valvoline symbol in the rear of the building. So the two signs would now be on the front facade and the right-side facade as well. And again, I apologize, you don't have a copy of that in front of you. In addition, there were some concerns over the, the bays. The entrance of the bays had some signs up top, kind of the red, white, and blue and the, the numbers. And so again, Valvoline has conceded to, in essence, removing those signs. What they are requesting is just to have basically the numbers one, two, and three above the, the bays themselves, and that would be in like a brown texture, so very nonchalant. And again, we can certainly provide that information to this board if you would like. We have, we, the architect has been coordinating with the town's consulting architect, LaBella, and I believe you should have copy of a sign-off letter from them basically acknowledging that their prior concerns have been, you know, met at this point in time. So that was kind of one of the, the major items that was discussed. The second one, and let me just switch exhibits. The second one was with respect to the location of the dumpster. We had previously proposed it, it would have been kind of on the east side of the building in relative proximity to Main Street Fishers, and there were some concerns over the visibility of that with the, the traffic on Main Street Fishers. And so what we've basically done is flip-flop it and slid it further to the south on the opposite end, which you can see on the screen there, so that it will be much farther from Main Street Fishers, obviously screened from Route 96 as well, and basically as far away from the roads as possible with still some operation efficiency to, to get to that dumpster without having to go to the complete back of the property. So it was really the, the second concern. And the third concern was really the visibility of the building and the orientation of the building, specifically the, the garage bays themselves, and, you know, how it would appear along Route 96. And so the architects provided some, some renderings that would help portray not only what it would look like from Route 96, but also the intersection as well as Main Street Fishers, which I believe you guys should have received copies of. So again, the one in front of you here is really a depiction of, of the intersection, and as you can see, really the, the building itself is, is basically completely screened from, from visibility between the existing trees and the, and the proposed trees. If you don't mind going to the, the next one, by the way, these are both in daytime and nighttime as per the board's request. So this exhibit is from Main Street Fishers now, and again, I don't think the, the concern was as great here because the bays don't open in this orientation, they open facing Route 96. But again, this gives you a, a general depiction, depiction of what, what it would look like once constructed. And if you don't mind going to the last one there. So this one would be from Route 96, and again, the concern being that, you know, how visible the bay doors are. I will tell you that these renderings were, were not produced by our office, and we've coordinated with the architect a little bit on this. I think they're a little, they don't actually capture all the proposed and existing trees in the right-of-way there. You can see there's kind of one right in the middle of the building, there's kind of one to the right of the building, but in essence, there's another three or four trees that would be really in front of that building itself. So I know we talked about, you know, hey, could we look at the, you know, rotating the building 90 degrees? Could we look at doing some screening up front? And again, we've talked to our client, their preference is to maintain the building and the orientation as originally shown. It puts their tower kind of at the intersection, you know, if we look at rotating it, the tower's kind of in the back, they don't have that same kind of visibility. So again, their preference is to have it aligned as initially shown, and again, with the amount of landscaping that exists today in the proposed landscaping, feel that it would be adequately screened from the public in, in any type of, you know, potential noise and/or, you know, light emanating from the bays. So again, those were kind of the, the larger concerns that, that I guess I had felt from, from the board. You know, since we've made the resubmital last Monday, we have received three letters, again, one from the town's consulting architect basically acknowledging that it sounds like their concerns have been met, one from the internal town storm, and then also one from the code enforcement. And again, it sounds like all of their concerns have been met at this point in time. Obviously, there's still some other responses we're waiting to hear from, engineers at LaBella, of course, and, you know, the Town of Farmington Sewer District, so, you know, there's a couple of other things out there, but none of those were, in my opinion, any major concerns and just more, you know, technical changes. And again, so that was kind of the majority of the changes. You know, I'd be happy to, to go through the whole list of the response letter, which you should have in front of you. It's, it's quite lengthy, maybe four or five pages. Hopefully, you guys have had a chance to review that and feel everything is adequate, adequately addressed, and certainly willing to discuss any part of that that you would like to at this time.
Um, Joe, questions?
I appreciate the artist renderings there, and it helps me visualize this a little bit better. And I do like the changes to the facade of the building, so...
The materials and the, the way the brick and things like that. How about the orientation? Any comments on that?
No, I'm okay with it.
You're okay with the orientation facing 96?
I like it that way, yeah.
Huh?
Um, I, I like the orientation, the way we had mentioned last time, the 90 degrees to what it's currently shown, because I think it shows less cars and headlights coming out on the main, on the Main Street. I also think that the, the rendering is nice, but it's kind of self-serving to the applicant in terms of hiding the building as best as can be done. If we were to go out there today, we wouldn't see that. That's a leaf-on rendering, which is good, but I think a leaf-off rendering is also to be considered as well. So, and I think that ties in directly with the orientation of the building. So I, I'd like to see what it looks like in a leaf-off rendering, and I'd like to know why it couldn't be rotated 90 degrees. Those are my comments.
Al?
Pretty much echo Scott's comments. I guess the, you know, in lieu of rotating 90 degrees, if that's not feasible for any reason, then to put more of the conifer trees, I think I'm on...
Okay, just make closer...
More of the conifer trees on the 96, Route 96 facing side versus in, in the rear of the building to address what Scott's point was on the leaves off the tree, which would give significantly different look, I think. So primary concern is shielding of the building, so the extent that that could be maximized with conifers, I think that would be helpful.
I'm sorry, did you echo also the orientation comments as well?
I, I could accept it as is. Preference would be to rotate it 90 degrees, but if it remains facing Route 96 to maximize the conifer trees to kind of shield it, you know, 365 days a year.
Okay. Is that it?
Yep.
Okay. I guess I have a similar comments to Scott regarding the orientation, and I obviously expressed that previously. Understanding you could rotate the building, you certainly could put the tower on the corner towards the 96 Fisher, Main Street Fishers corner if you, I guess, flip the orientation and kind of put this, make it opposite hand.
Mm-hmm.
So whereas now you'd be, if you just took that whole plan and rotated it, you'd be putting that corner in the back, like you were saying, but if they put that corner up front, you could still have the three bays toward the back of the building, as well as the parking spaces that you're showing on the, I'll call it, south side of the building. Now, it would end up being on the west side if you did that flip in orientation as well. So I don't think it's an insurmountable thing. As a matter of fact, I think it saves some pavement on the 96 side of the building, and it's less, less disruptive to the site, and certainly you don't have to do nearly as much screening as you would with the building in the orientation that your preference is.
Mm-hmm.
So we had asked if you could bring in a plan showing what that would look like. I don't see that in your package. So I'm a little disappointed that, that, I mean, I didn't ask for all the renderings and things like that, but, and it's, because I think we get a good idea of how the building renderings look, and to Joe's point, I think the architecture is much improved, and appreciate that. I think that will all look nice on the site. My preference personally is to flip it 90 degrees, but then do an opposite-hand type design where you, you can put your corner up there, and then you get the sign on Main Street and Route 96, right at the corner as your preference is. So those are my comments. Wes, did you have any thing that you'd like to bring forward at this point?
Less about building design and orientation, but I want to talk about something that's underground.
That's fine.
Sanitary sewer. And, and I'm looking at our initial comment and, and wondering maybe if we potentially misworded our comment. So our initial comment suggested that the applicant explore and consider an alternate, alternative method to connecting to the public sanitary sewer in a manner that would not require installation of a new manhole. And I think maybe what we had intended to indicate is, is there already a manhole out there that you could connect to in lieu of installing a new manhole, rather than simply eliminating the manhole and making a direct connection? I'm happy to follow up with the applicant offline, you know, outside of here, but I think that's something that we should look at a little bit and just have some dialogue back and forth on to resolve.
Okay.
The san-, it looks like the updated plans provide the connection in the same location, but without, without a manhole. So might have been, might have been a little miswording on, on my part. But let me double-check with our, our sanitary sewer engineers.
Can I, can I maybe just respond a little bit to the, I guess, the orientation and the screening? So, you know, again, we had approached Valvoline, and, you know, obviously expressed the board's concern, and I, I hope you understand and see that there's been lots of work on, on their end to, to kind of come to hopefully an agreement here. You know, they, they really are very steadfast about the orientation of this building. You know, obviously, real estate, everyone has their reasons for orienting a building a certain way, and, you know, sales and this, that, whatever. And I, I think if, if the board's concerns are, again, the fact of, you know, our, if we're screening the bay doors, if we're screening the headlights, if we're doing that, I think we can accomplish that, again, through whether it be some, some additional plantings, and again, maybe, maybe it does need to be some, you know, evergreen-type, leaf-on during winter-type species mixed in. And again, I'm sure that Valvoline would be happy to kind of explore that and perhaps provide an updated rendering that, again, is possibly a little bit more accurate than, than what's actually portrayed on our site plan. If that's truly what the board is after, again, I think Valvoline's preference is certainly to go in that direction. Again, they feel very strongly about the orientation of the building, and I guess I would want to hear from the board if that would satisfy the concern.
So a question I had too, I was looking at that elevation. It's not easy to see without zooming in, but I see clear glass there.
That's correct.
Can they reduce the amount of light spillage from inside the building out by frosting it or doing other, you know, darkening the glass so that there's not so much of an obvious look to it? I don't know if you guys...
I can't answer that, but I can certainly approach them with that.
Mm-hmm. I'll leave it at that, but I don't know. Al, any thought on that as well?
Hey.
Al, any thought on that as well?
I do agree with, you know, anything that we could, can be done to minimize the glass on the frontage of the building, provided that the frontage is on Route 96. Probably less of an issue if it's Main Street Fisher's, if it's reoriented, but extent it's on 96 minimizing the glass, I think would be a positive.
I mean, I understand that somebody wants to see if there's a car sitting there waiting to come in, you know. Don't they, do they enter, which side do they enter in this building?
They would enter in the, from the rear.
From the rear, so any cars, it would be stacked there. I know usually there's a couple of them.
Potentially, yeah.
Be, you know, for that. There's no, none of the cars are in the front of the building towards 96 unless they're leaving and driving around, correct?
That's correct, yes.
So, in that case, you don't need to look for cars coming in from that side, so you certainly could frost it, darken it, or both. If you want some light coming in from that side to add to the look, you know, the interior lighting of the bays during the day, I understand that, but just looking for a way to temper the directness of how bright lights can be, car lights shining outward as they're entering, things like that, it's, it's just a different mindset you are. And then Route 96, Architectural Overlay District.
Okay.
You're aware, and clearly you've addressed some of that from the building facade, so I guess I'd ask that, take those questions back. Valvoline? Scott?
I guess, an item that comes to mind relative to corridor regulations and such is I'm thinking of the Victor Car Wash, which is near my office and.
That's true.
And I see a lot of traffic going through there, but I see it, either the cars and the associated headlights at night very well mitigated just because of the orientation of the building. I think the comment that we made last time was a good comment. I'd be curious to know why Valvoline, then, if they're driving the orientation, why the orientation suggested is somehow problematic for them. It would seem to me that you have a certain-sized building, you have circulation, you can accommodate it. My sense would be there's, there's more visibility with the orientation as shown. And I think what we're saying is that we have a project in town that has complied with the regulations and complied with the suggestions, and it seems to be going well, has, has been used for many years now.
Yeah.
That's my comment.
That's a good point. I hadn't remembered that, but it's something that was requested and ultimately built, so I guess we're trying to say we're pushing back a little on the reluctance to switch the building.
I mean, this is an important intersection. Obviously, the Fisher's Road side gets the more visibility than of the bays per se, but I think that's probably where we want it, more so than on Main Street, on the main drag, I should say.
And I guess I would still say you could cover that issue the same reason, the same way with frosting the glass or, you know, mitigating headlights and light from the building spillage out onto Main Street Fisher's, just as we, I just mentioned, so. And you certainly can flip the corners so that it can be up front still and mitigate, you know, resolve that issue that they had concerns over, so.
I guess, is the concern too, I mean, obviously, there's, there's vehicles, and if the concern is, we're, are we talking the headlights or are we talking the lights from the interior of the building?
Both.
Okay, because the headlights would obviously, you know, there would be some headlights, but, you know, the car's not running when they're doing it. Well, change, turns on, and they leave instantaneously. It's 10, 15 seconds at most, I would think, so we're not talking about a consistent problem with headlights shining at you. Obviously, the interior of the building will have headlights at all times, and again, I think that would be, you know, less direct at, you know, vehicles if that's the concern there, so, again, just to make sure that the board is aware, it's not like those headlights are going to be on 24/7 when there's a car in there.
Understood. So, I guess you're hearing some pushback on the, don't flip the building, and I'd appreciate, I think we were asking that, that they at least look at that more closely, take into account the comments that we've made here on the board, and say that our preference really is to flip the building and do what they can to mitigate that, the lighting and the look from an architectural perspective, which they've done a nice job, as I said, and I think Joe did too, with the brick instead of EFS and that sort of thing, so that's very helpful. So, technically, the public hearing is still open? Is there anyone from the public that has any comments? You'd like, come on, identify yourself, share your concerns.
Hi, Philip Nelson, 7976 Taylor Road. I'd like to pose an idea for your consideration. If you go to California or Arizona, privacy walls are very common, and a four-to-six-foot privacy wall along the sidewalk on Route 96 and/or Fisher's Road would significantly reduce the issues you're discussing. Thank you.
Is it a, sorry, the question about privacy wall, is that something that, because there might be residents across the street or anything?
No, no, just to, just to eliminate the visual impact of the cars aggressing the bays.
Well, it's a screening issue.
It's a fence.
Yeah, well, yeah, you're screening with a fence, you could be screening with evergreens, you know, or other non-decisive trees, so similar comments, so thank you.
Berman trees, yeah.
Yeah. Anyone else from the public wishes to address the board? And Wes, you said you didn't have any other comments at this time?
No, I think based, based upon our initial review and their responses, I think La Bella is largely going to be satisfied with our comment letter, so.
All right. So, I think there's still a few things to address from the board's perspective, and that's all the action we have for this evening on that application, so. Unless you have anything for us? All right, thank you very much. Okay, item number three this evening, 1086 Strong Road subdivision. Wes, Town Board to take some action on this within the last month, if you want to review that?
Yeah, I can just let you know what I understand. I was in attendance at the, at the Town Board meeting a few weeks ago, and the developers' Design Professional approached the Town Board and requested, made a request to formally extend the water benefit area, right? And my understanding per that meeting is that the Town Board is not interested in extending the water benefit area for, I think, one of the primary reasons, and Mr. Guinan can correct me or elaborate on this if he chooses. But several years back, there was a survey performed, and I think a couple of different versions of that survey went out, or maybe some additional survey went out to those who didn't respond. And largely, my understanding is that the southwest quadrant of town, they were happy with the quality of water and the quantity of water that they were receiving out of their private wells, and they weren't interested in having public water in that portion of the town. I think that's largely the reason why they didn't choose to extend the water benefit area here, so.
So, this affects our review?
Yeah, it does. This affects the, the design of the, of the project, right? Previously, we had design plans that showed an extension of a water main along the public roadway onto, well, from Strong Road to Taylor Road, and now we would expect to see updated design plans that reflected location of proposed wells and septic systems for review. So, and that's going to change the seeker review, right? The environmental review of the project, because previously we were anticipating, you know, disturbance along the public right-of-way for the water main, that's, that would no longer happen, and we would want to take a look at the information with regard to the well, the aquifer, that sort of thing, to determine, to help make a determination of whether there's an adverse impact to the environment in that regard, so.
So, previously, we had expressed our intent to become lead agency for this project, sent out the appropriate correspondence and to involved and interested agencies. Having not received any objection, I think that's the only action we have this evening is to say that we can declare ourselves lead agency. That's the only action we have for this evening. Before we do that, I did want to give an opportunity, if you wish, to address the board on any of what Wes just brought forward.
Sure. Thank you.
Good evening.
You know, Wes is right. I mean, basically, what the Town Board said to my shock, quite frankly, is they didn't want, you know, several hundred thousand dollars' worth of free water main and improved fire protection that would go along with that, and of course, the somewhat more reliable source of water, simply because the residents in the area, as Wes said, were, based on surveys that were sent out previously, didn't want to have water in the area, unlike some other areas in town. We're right over a primary source of aquifer, the water quantity is very good, the quality is very good, that's what we expect. The well driller told me that there's 40, 50 gallon a minute wells that would have that type of capacity that they've drilled across the street on Taylor Road. So, we're expecting, backing up a little bit, so our next step, and we've got it underway, is the Health Department would require that two wells be drilled and tested. We have one well at the existing house, and even though it was tested originally, they're requesting that that be retested, and then we'll have one more well in the central area, Lot 5, that we have to drill, and we do have a proposal from a well driller that's been accepted, and we were going to do that next week. Unfortunately, we couldn't obviously get it done in time for the buildings, for this meeting. So, you know, assuming that the results come out as expected, we do have to resubmit plans, you know, Wes is right, to show the well locations and respect to where the septic systems and all that kind of stuff, as well as the, the results from the, the testing. That all has to be approved by the Health Department. There's quality testing and there's quantity testing that gets done for both of those wells, so that's, that's where we're at.
I'd suggest next time we see you, you will have all of that in hand, a site, whatever change in.
Yeah, I, Joe, I hope so. I mean, I, you know, it's Christmas time, can be tough. If they get the wells done next week, I will get, excuse me, attempt to get them, you know, right back to the town within, you know, another week or two, so that at the first meeting in January, we might be in a position to move forward with secret resolutions and further consideration.
Well, we'll see how close that is to what the, the planning department needs time-wise for getting on the next agenda versus the one later on.
Yeah, now, just, just as a point of information, I said, you know, the, what the Town Board told me was if they extend the water main down the road, then they bring in the adjacent people into the district. Because I said, I don't care, I mean, I'll extend the water main down and then we'll put this in the district. It would be remote, it would be, it would have a gap from the existing district to this district. I'm not sure why that is a problem, other than the policy is to put them in continuously. If we wanted to put in water main that badly, I guess, you'd have to get 50% of the, I think it's the assessed amount, to do district, they would include all those. So, we're not interested in that in this case because of the expected high-yield, high-quality walls that we're expecting. So, you know, a little bump in the rope.
Okay.
So, they have a few.
Mm-hmm.
Like I said, I.
Yeah, it's not something that we're, I mean, we would have to certainly defer back to the Town Board for any other action if you had to, but, you know.
Yeah, no, so I'm expecting, I'm expecting that the results are going to be good or great, and we'll be right back here.
Okay.
Don't expect to change the plan, other than layout, let's put it that way, other than to show the wells, and we'll still do all the, the bermine and the plantings and all that other stuff.
And septic system relation and all that, right? Don't you have some codes?
I'm sorry, Joe?
Don't you have to, there's code requirements for separation of septic systems, these fields to wells, all that.
Yeah, there's separations, and, you know, and you don't want to put the wells next to each other, so one drawdown affects the other, you know, all those kind of things. I've got it all laid out, but again, I can't, you know, we can't get any approvals until we get the, the wells tested, and I understand the board's not wanting to move forward until they have that updated plan.
Sure, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Hope y'all have a happy.
Comments?
Hope you have a happy holiday.
You too. Any comment, Mike, from Town Board? Probably should get you a microphone or come on up here. I suspect it's on the record, that action?
Yeah. Not much, excuse me.
Yeah, just wait till you get up here.
Hi, Mike Guinan. It just, the way I understand it, we did surveys years ago about the people that are in the existing district, and it went out to all of them, and that was the one district that expressed they didn't want to be part of a district, and the board felt that to take that plot of ground out of one district and apply it to another one would go against what they did in the surveys that they spent money on years past, so they voted to keep it the same, not, and because everybody within the district was all the way up and down Victor, or about Hill Road, all the way to the border on the other side, Strong Road and all them, and it was all part of that district, and so they voted to just keep it as it is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it. As I indicated, we do not intend to take any action other than to declare the Planning Board as lead agency this evening, and so do not intend to open up the floor for public comment. There's certainly going to be plenty of opportunity in future meetings to do that, so y'all have what's on the record from the Town Board regarding the water district, and it's kind of hard for us to comment on anything that's not before us yet, that Doug said that he needs to progress further with engineering and the well tests and things like that. So, until that time, we're not ready to continue the conversation. We certainly will review the correspondence that we've gotten, and we'll be prepared to discuss those at a future date as well, so.
Joe, would you care to just explain? I think people might want to know what being a lead agency means, what the action's all about.
Sure.
On the spot, right?
Yeah, I actually defer to Wes on the, the technical discussion.
Okay, so, the Planning Board tonight has in front of them a draft resolution to basically deem themselves, declare themselves, and, and confirm lead agency status under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. Each of the projects that comes before this board have to comply with the State Environmental Quality Review Act, and typically, this board is the lead agency for, well, unlisted actions, you, you are the lead agency, you have that ability. But this is a Type 1 action, it's, it's classified as a Type 1 action as, because of certain characteristics, I think because it is a realty subdivision. That's a trigger that makes this a Type 1 action, and there are other involved agencies, including, well, it would have been the Victor Town Board and Monroe County Water Authority, but they are likely no longer involved agencies, but New York State Department of Health and Ontario County Planning Department, we've identified as involved and interested agencies. So, this basically allows the Town Planning Board to be the lead agency for the environmental review of this project, right? So, you, as a board, have the ability to issue a negative declaration or a positive declaration indicating whether or not there's a potential for a significant adverse environmental impact. So, just, that's it.
Yeah, okay. You said it much more eloquently, I think, than I can probably more accurately, so thanks, Wes.
You're welcome.
So, with that, as we've gone through the process, we are able to declare ourselves lead agency because of this previous correspondence with other involved and interested agencies, so I have a resolution in front of me to state that. So, for 1086 Strong Road application, oh-four PS 2021, whereas on August 25th, 2021, the Secretary of the Planning Board received a preliminary subdivision application entitled 1086 Strong Road subdivision located at 1086 Strong Road, and whereas it is the intent of A6 Property Holdings LLC, the applicant, to develop the project, including creation of 10 single-family residential lots on approximately 34.42 acres, including onsite septic system. 34.42 acres, including onsite septic systems for each lot, and whereas the application was previously classified by the Town of Victor Planning Board as a Type 1 action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, and whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board proceeded with coordinated review, and whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board declared its intent to act as lead agency on or about November 9th, 2022, sorry, December 13th, 2022, and directed the Planning Board Secretary to email, to mail the EAF Environmental Assessment Form with Part 1, completed by the project sponsor, and a copy of the subdivision plan application to all identified involved and interested agencies, notifying them that a lead agency must be agreed upon within 30 calendar days of the date of that environmental assessment form, EAF, was mailed to them, expressing the Town Planning Board's intent to act as lead agency. Notification was sent to the Town of Victor Town Board, Monroe County Water Authority, New York State Department of Health, Ontario County Planning Department was also notified of the pending application as an interested agency, and whereas the involved agencies submitted responses indicating that they had concurred with Planning Board acting as lead agency. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Town of Victor Planning Board assumes and confirms its status as lead agency. So, that resolution, I'd like a motion.
I'll move it.
Scott moves.
Second.
Go seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Carried for zero. We are lead agency for this project. Thank you all very much. Next item, Crown Castle Verizon, Old Dutch Road. If it's a technical or regarding the project, or is it about process? Sure, come on up. We have plenty of time to ask about the project.
Marcia Sengas, 1231 Wellington Drive. I just understood that from the town's website, regarding the agenda, that it shows a printout that this is a public hearing tonight.
Yes.
And I understood that, I'm not in that neighborhood, but it appears to me that quite a few of the neighbors are here. And is it, if there is someone who wanted to present something, would they be allowed to with it having been on the website that it was a public hearing?
Well, it's a, it is a public hearing, and that the public certainly is welcome to attend, hear what's going on, understand the process. We don't always take public comment at every public hearing.
Okay. I didn't understand that.
Good question. I appreciate that. And as I said, we're not screwing anyone from certainly submitting separately letters to the board, but also from requesting or to make comment in future meetings. We are not closing the public hearing tonight, so.
So, even though it's a public hearing, the public can't speak?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
That was the decision that we made, because the only action we're taking tonight is to declare ourselves as lead agency. So, that's why I asked if it was a process question or something more technical. And that's where we are. It's a process question. Thank you. So, with that, item number four, Crown Castle Verizon. I really can't, I, there's a- Well, you can certainly present it to the Planning Department, and we will, as we have with other correspondents. You can walk it up to Planning Board.
I would love to take it for you.
Yep. Kim will take any correspondence or interest that you have. Thank you. Thanks, Kim. So, sorry. Crown Castle Verizon, applicant is requesting approval to modify and upgrade equipment on an existing wireless facility, and this is at 795 Old Dutch Road. Good evening.
Good evening. Good to see everyone. Brian Tempio for Crown Castle, behalf of Verizon Wireless. Basically, Mr. Logan, you just summed it up. Verizon is looking to add antennas to an existing tower and Old Dutch Road with supporting equipment, looking for a special use permit. I believe the documents have been under review. I know Lobella has reviewed it, and the coenforcement officer has also reviewed the drawings. There were some comments. As of today, Lisa, I believe we sent you the new construction drawings with the additional signature blocks that were requested.
I wasn't able to print off the site plan because there was an issue with the size of it coming over from Lamar. But it is, and I think in your Dropbox, it was maybe. And then there's a tower survey and an ASBelt survey that I did, was able to print off.
Okay.
Just so you know, the size of it caused it to-
All right. And if you look for it, the new signatures are on the lower right-hand of every page.
So, essentially, you're adding a pad for additional equipment. Is that true?
Yep. We're adding nine antennas and their supporting equipment on the tower, then on the ground. There actually is a fence extension within Crown's existing lease area. They have a 75 by 75 square lease area. We're within that area, just pushing the fence out. So, adding a cement pad with some supporting equipment there.
Okay.
And that's it.
All right. Joe, questions for the applicant?
I'm looking at Lobella's letter, and I just want to make sure I understand the prior approval comment, the first comment, that confirming existing conditions apply with the original special use permit and site plan approval. Have we addressed that, or has that been, have we got a response to that?
So, I haven't followed up with town staff on that. We can, we'd be happy to look at that, though, confirm that everything is still in place.
That's all of that.
Okay.
Scott?
Is this another project like we've done with you in the past, where you're replacing things, or there's-
A little different. We're adding for the first time. So, in the past, the antennas already existed, taking those off and putting new ones on.
Right.
This one, the antennas aren't even there yet. We're going below the existing antennas that are other carriers that are on there. We're not extending the height of the tower or anything like that.
Using the same tower?
Same tower. We're just adding for the first time antennas, nine antennas around. So, sort of swapping equipment. We're adding for the first time.
Co-locating is always a good thing.
Co-locating, you're co-locating.
That's what we're doing. We're co-locating.
Okay.
Always a happy word.
As long as, as long as the tower's not being raised and lights aren't being put on it.
Has a community feel to it.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Okay, then I think I understand the scope of the project. I don't know if there's an aerial that shows this location. I looked through the packet. I didn't see it in there. That might be helpful, but.
Usually on the front page, there might be a little square, couple inches. Oh, all right.
There's Scott.
Is that it, up there on?
Looks like it, yeah.
Old Dutch Road, Lehigh. There you go. Just giving it for context.
Looking for the location? Right there. Hidden in the trees.
Even better.
Lil's property right there?
Yeah, this is the Lil. What is it called, Street?
Well, you got two, Victor Menden Road, Old Dutch, and then there's Main Street, Fishers. Okay. Oh, yeah, it's in between. It's right off of the Lehigh Valley Trail.
Okay, I'm good.
Al?
Other questions or comments?
Okay. Anything else to expand on, Wes?
Nope.
Okay, we are a public hearing, I believe. So, any from the public have any questions regarding application? Hearing, we're seeing none. Intertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move to close.
Joe moves.
Second.
Al seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Carried for zero. Public hearing is closed. Any other comments before we move forward? I think this is pretty straightforward application. As Scott said, it's similar to what you've done before, except this time you're co-locating, not replacing. So, I think we're good. All right. So, with that, I will read the resolution that is in your packet. So, Crown Castle Verizon, 795 Old Dutch Road, application 32 SB 22 and 10 SU 22, whereas the Planning Board made the following findings effect, and there are 10 of them, including the last one, which Lobella Associates reviewed the site plan and special use permit application in a letter dated October 31st, 2022, and provided comments. Whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board reviewed the unlisted action on December 13th, 2022, and identified no significant impacts. Now, therefore be it resolved that the project Crown Castle Verizon will not have a significant impact on the environment, and that a negative declaration be prepared, and be it further resolved that the application of Crown Castle Verizon site plan entitled Crown Castle, sorry. Again, please. Doing business as Verizon, located 75, 795 Old Dutch Road in the Town of Victor, drawing by tower engineering professionals received by the Planning Board Secretary, October 17th, 2022, last revised December 13th, 2022. Planning Board Site Plan Application Number 32 SB 2022 and Special Use Application 10 SU 2022 be approved with the following conditions, conditions to be addressed prior to the chairman's signature on the site plan, that no final signatures will be given on the plans until all legal and engineering fees have been paid. Number two, the comments in a letter dated October 31st, 2022 from Lobella Associates be addressed, ongoing conditions that the site plan comply with Town of Victor design and construction standards for land development, including Section 4, and the building permit be obtained prior to, before installation of antennas begins, and be it further resolved that the Planning Board Secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval letter. So, for that resolution, do I hear a motion?
I'll move.
I'll move.
Second.
No seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Carried for zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item number five, Welsh Pole Barn, 6900 Cherry Street, owner John Welch. Applicant is requesting approval to build a 6,000-square-foot pole barn with a wood frame and metal sides for cold storage on the property at 6900 Cherry Street. Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. So, John Welch, State Route 444. And I was in, I think in 2019, for, to get approval for a pole barn, a little bit smaller. We were approved there. But, you know, early '20, we drawn the permit, and then COVID hit, and we just kind of put the brakes on everything, waiting to see how things would pan out. And now, we're ready to construct, but we want to expand the area a little bit, a little bit more space. I've got, you know, acquired some things over the years and some personal things as well, and I'd like to get them stuffed inside. And so, I just really want a nice barn where I can get things closed in. That's really the bottom line. Changed the color. We went to a red. You know, I've painted my barns this year. Everything's red, and just kind of want to go with that theme. And can use the black. It's kind of a modern touch, we think. So, that's our goal there.
Is something, are you going to get all of your equipment inside this building that's on the site now, or most of it?
Yeah, as much as we can. You know, we'll still have trailers outside and things, but any powered equipment, like, you know, any farm equipment or skid steers, any construction-type equipment, we want to store inside. Trailers will still be outside, you know, trucks will still be outside. We looked at the Hanson property down here in Farmington, but it just doesn't meet zoning that we would need to operate out of there. So, you know, we're back here.
Okay. Questions from the board now?
No, no questions.
Okay. Scott?
Is there an overall aerial to show where this is going, how it relates to the rest of your property? I mean, I see a little portion of a drawing there, but I'm trying to picture how it-
Yeah, so we go back to the, maybe a couple, right there. So, you see a little blue dot? So, my whole property is, well, this parcel here is 45 or 50-ish acres. And so, the lot is on Cherry Street. Perfect. So, you can see that lot there. So, it would be, you know, to the, to the east of the corner property there. It's got, there's a property there on the corner, would be to the east of that, where I believe Wes is moving that cursor around.
You have a laser up there?
Oh, I do. It's shaking like a leaf.
Just don't look in it.
Yeah, so kind of right in there.
Okay, so, and this, so this is a commercial type of application, is that correct?
No, we're an ag.
I think I remember you came to our zoning board once upon a time.
Yes.
For instance, we suggested you get ag status.
Right.
Well, then, with the ag status, are you complying with a setback?
Yes. Yep, yep. Yeah, we're exceeding all setbacks. The reason, I think the reason I had to come here originally, as I'm thinking back, is because this piece of property here, right here, this 45 acres, is separate from these two, because I have them, you know, they're divided out. So, since there's no primary structure of a home, the barn was then closer to the road than a primary structure.
Right.
So, that's originally, I think, what brought me to this Planning Board versus just getting a permit on the ag to just build the barn, if I remember right. But I'm- Okay, thanks.
It was because of the size of the structure that you're here.
Okay.
It's over 1,000 square feet, so that's why you're here.
Bigger than a shed.
Yes. He does have a use variance on this, on this property.
Okay, that's what I thought I remembered from the zoning board, yeah.
And he probably does have, I don't know for sure, but he's talking about the accessory structure being on that property. He probably has an area variance also, which he probably received before he got his approval for a site plan for the barn, because there is no primary structure there. So, it's an accessory structure. Without the primary structure, he needed the area variance for that also, which he received.
Right. I remember when you appeared before the zoning board, because I was on the board at that time.
Years ago.
Yeah.
That was years ago. Yes, it was. Quite some time ago.
Town's been good to me, so I appreciate that.
Would those variances then enable what we're seeing before us today?
Correct. Yes.
That, I guess that was what I was trying to get to.
Okay.
Thank you.
No, that's good. I got the aerial here if you needed it.
Yeah. And I just saw that small portion of the drawing. I was trying to figure out where it is. So, I thank you for the visuals.
I try. Joe?
No, I noticed the barns are all red, so I think the new structure is going to fit right in on the site.
Okay. Anyone from the public have any questions?
I will say that I am a neighbor, and I support it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Anyone else? Wes?
She's a neighbor and a consultant. She just consulted.
Yes, that was good.
Good neighbor.
What's going on with, what's going on with roof drainage for the barn?
Well, we're going to use six-inch gutters, and, you know, and three-by-four downspouts wherever, I want to say AG gutter, but I'm wrong, all-county gutter recommends that we put the downspouts. And, you know, we will certainly, we're going to bury them and bring them out to here through the pavement.
All right.
Or, you know.
Okay, so they're going to go underneath the existing material?
Yeah, because we don't want them spilling on, and, you know, it'd be a mess, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So, that shouldn't be a problem at all.
It's going to be part of your irrigation system, then.
Do you get, do you get ponding water on that surface now in any particular place?
So, I would-
I guess the question is, is it impervious now?
It is impervious. Yeah, the whole space is impervious, yeah. The only spot I get ponding is I'll get some back here, because I got a low spot from where, you know, it's self-created. So, I can sometimes get some ponding back here. But, but as, it's all pitched to the east, and everything runs to the east. And then, we cut a new swell up here, you know, with the help of the town. We got a pipe through here, and then we got some awesome drainage that runs down through here to this, if I got my bearing straight. We got a swamp right here, like this is all swamp. I'm following through here. And this is our land as well. So, we've got some piping through there, just to help with the drainage.
Okay.
So that the field's usable, you know, so that we can farm the field.
Yeah, the only other comment that I had, and I was kind of picking on them a little bit, is the drawing itself, right? Sometimes you hear me talk about not having a design professional, licensed design professional, put the drawing together. But it's the same, it's almost the same drawing that was provided a couple of years ago that this board approved. And it's not quite to scale, right? The dimensions aren't quite there. If you want something put together that's a little more accurate, I mean, that's up to you. that's up to you, or if you just want to have the town's code enforcement office to be able to go out there, I don't know, maybe that something could be coordinated with Kim to confirm the setbacks and that sort of thing.
I guess I would only say, since you don't require any variances, just to make sure that the building's in a place where that is going to be true.
Right.
Yeah, and do you have a way to, I mean, I guess I'd say it should be staked out where the building is supposed to go and you can show the town code enforcement office that it satisfies those requirements.
Right, and then we'll have to also, when we bore the holes, you know, it's pole barn type structure, when we bore the holes, and I'm sure they'll have to be inspected right then and they can see exactly where they are.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we're going to exceed all setbacks, yeah. We've got a lot of space to our west before our lot even starts, and then I'm going to have, you know, enormous amount of space there, you know, after that anyway, because I'm going to want to travel through there.
I may have the survey map here with all the different parcels and, and then a small blue triangle or rectangle there for your barn, so.
Right.
Just a matter of making sure that that, in the field, that can be verified, that's all.
Absolutely, right.
But I think that would be fine. It was a little more of a challenge with the geothermal system that was right next to easements and town, you know, and the edge of the property and right of ways and everything else.
How many, how many pipes are you going to have go underneath that parking surface towards the field area? Is it just going to be two of them per corner?
It'll, it'll be two, because the two on the, the two on the west side will come through and pick up the two on the east side and continue out, so we'll size that up, will be four inches coming from the west side, and then when we meet the ones on the east, we'll go up to six inches, I'm sure, because four inches won't, I'm sure, won't be enough for, you know, we'd be maxed out, you know, with three by fours.
In the foundation, you're not excavating any of the existing material, it's just going to be built on top of the surface?
Yeah, we're going to build it on top, and then we're, we're, instead of cutting, I'm going to build on top and then build up to it, so it's the highest point, so that I'm, so that all my ground pitches away.
Out of drainage.
Yeah, I don't want anything in it. I don't want to be a low spot at all, you know, I see that all the time with buildings where there's a low spot and they fight water, we're not going to fight water, you know.
Will they be submitting an architectural, a stamped architectural plan of the building to be built? I mean, we saw something that I would call a rendering of that.
Yes.
The permit, right?
As part of the building permit, yes.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
I guess, to your point, I was a little concerned that that was the, the running, running drawing, in which case it leaves a lot to the imagination if you're going to build it.
Right.
Hammer and nails.
Yeah.
Lots of, lots of nails.
Lots of toothpicks.
Okay.
I think that's all I have from, from La Bella's perspective.
All right.
So if codes can handle it and confirm its location and the quality of the architectural plan presented and all that sort of thing, that probably isn't necessary to do a whole lot more detail. It's, it's not like our geothermal one that had.
It was a tight site for that.
Yeah, yeah, this is a little larger.
Yeah. So, I'm okay with that if you guys are.
I'm good.
All right. Can we close the public hearing already?
You need to.
Need to, okay. Any comments from the public before I close the public hearing? If everyone's happy, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move?
Al moves, Joe seconds, all in favor? Aye, opposed, carried, four zero. All right, so we do have a resolution for the Welch Pole Barn, 6900 Cherry Street, Application 34 SB 2022, whereas Planning Board made the following findings a fact, there are seven of them. Whereas the town of Victor Planning Board reviewed the enlisted action on December 13th, 2022, identified no significant impacts now therefore be it resolved that the project Welch Pole Barn will not have a significant impact on the environment and that a negative declaration be prepared and be it further resolved that the application of John Welch, 1723 State Route 444, Victor, New York, for the construction of a 6,000 square foot pole barn on property located at 6900 Cherry Street, received by the Planning Board November 10th, 2022. Planning Board Application 34 SB 2022 be approved with the following conditions. Conditions to be addressed prior to chairman's signature. Condition number one is standard. Number two, the comments in a letter dated December 5th, 2022 from La Bella Associates be addressed. Ongoing conditions, both are standard and be it further resolved that the Planning Board Secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval letter. On the resolution, do I hear a motion?
I'll move it.
Al moves?
Second.
Joe seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Carried for zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Pay your consultant.
Okay, we still have two more applications. First, number six, Ravenwood Golf Pro Shop Edition. Applicant is requesting approval for, to expand the existing clubhouse to accommodate an enlarged pro shop. Two-story, 1,600 plus or minus square foot addition to the eastern side of the existing building, along with a 1,700 plus or minus square foot patio addition. Good evening.
Good evening, my name is Thomas Toby Ray. I am, there's actually two companies that are associated with this application, although the RKH is the one that you have before you. RKH is the land that is, constitutes where Ravenwood Golf Club is, and we also have some, some adjacent land that is not part of the golf course, but is owned by RKH, which is an LLC. I am the president of RKH, I'm also one of the owners along with a couple of family members. In addition to that, there's Ravenwood Golf Club, which we normally think about, and that is, I'm the president of that organization, as well as an owner, along with a couple of family members. That's the actual operating company that operates on the RKH property, so there's, there's two companies, just for clarity, but RKH is where the application is coming from, because obviously, we're building on the RKH property. I just wanted to introduce myself to you, I'm going to rely mainly upon my engineer, Matt, and Joe Tomy, our architect, with respect to any details, but what we're finding is, we opened in 2001, in the middle 2000s, we didn't, we did in addition on the eastern side of, of the building, expanded that out in 2013, because of continued development with our business, we added on to the eastern side of the building, and once again, we're looking to add on to the eastern side of the building. The impetus for this is really based upon the fact that we're having difficulty, we've had enough success with respect to our events, with respect to the number of golfers that we're putting through the golf course every year, that we are running out of space, in particular, actually, from a kitchen perspective. So the impetus for this property was, okay, we need to expand the kitchen substantially in order to, to make, you know, efficient use of, and be able to get things out the way they need to get out, properly service our customers, and then once we got started on that, they said, well, there's only one way to do it, and so we ended up with this kind of, you know, snowball effect where now we're looking to, where the pro shop's currently located, which is when you walk right in the front door, that's going to be an indoor/outdoor bar/restaurant area, and then we're going to end up putting the pro shop with your approval, and that would actually be, I think, I think it's misstated, and it might be a misstatement on our part, but it would actually be on the eastern side of the eastern end of the building. In between the eastern end of the building and Victor, I'm sorry, Linnell Road, there's a whole host of, like a small forest right there. Some of that would be removed, but there would be enough forest remaining where the closest neighbor, which I believe is 300, 400 feet away, would not even be able to see anything that's being done. So I just wanted to introduce myself to you with respect to any details, I know that Matt and Joe have some commentary for you, but any questions you have for me, I'm happy to answer those questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Matt Tomlinson, Marathon Engineering. Just wanted to clarify, because I think there were some conflicting titles on some of the elevations, it's actually the southwestern portion of the building that we're making an addition on, towards Linnell Road, so doesn't change anything that was said other than it's southwest instead of east.
I got myself mixed.
So I don't know if we have the colored rendering that we had sent over for the site plan itself that I can talk to, and then Joe's going to talk to this slide relative to the building. Great, thank you. So in the upper left on the location map, just to, I'm sure everyone's familiar, but try not to poke myself, Linnell Road here, access drive, and where the existing cart drop off and cart staging areas specifically for tournaments are, and then the parking up, and we're looking to push the building out over where the existing cart access to the building where the storage is underneath, and if the board is familiar with that, topography out there now, the difference between the first floor and basement elevation requires some pretty significant regrading and reconfiguration of the cart paths and drive aisles around there. From a configuration standpoint, this is somewhat back of house for the carts and pro, pro shop staff staging areas, sorry, I got a little echo going on, and so it is a back of house operation, if you will, but also very highly visible to the golfers, because this access point brings you to the practice green and the first tee. In addition, where the cart path comes up from the 18th green towards the back of the clubhouse is also slightly affected by dropping some grade and trying to take out a little bit of the steepness of the access points to that area. I know there's some comments that I'll come back to a little bit later from the landscape consultant relative to potentially shrinking some of these islands and maintaining some vegetative growth, and I'll walk through that. And then one other piece that I wanted to mention was, right now, delivery vehicles for the restaurant park on the opposite side of the driveway, and we get several vehicle beverage, or food and beverage deliveries and other operational deliveries as part of normal operations of the clubhouse, and if that happens during an event where there's 100 golfers arriving around the same time or leaving at the same time, wheeling those down the access path and into the basement becomes problematic with crossing traffic. So we're creating a delivery vehicle pull-off zone on, on the side of that as well, just to simplify and try to minimize those delivery conflicts. So from a site plan perspective, all the utilities will be connected internal to the building addition. That building addition, as Toby mentioned, had the pro shop up on the first floor level with an extension of the patio to allow for exit of golfers who will primarily be entering from the parking lot level and coming through the building, but then exiting towards where carts are staged and/or towards the practice green and out to the patio where there would, as mentioned, be an inside-outside bar and more direct stair access down to the cart path area. The storm drainage will be pushed out and the grade dropped through this area, the existing generator sits roughly here in an existing island, that would be relocated along with the HVAC, and it's not on your site plan, but we did update this rendering for it, and it'll be on some of the revised plans. That'll sit down near to the lower entry elevation, the existing electric feed back into the building is there, so that proximity makes a lot of sense for that relocation. And then storm, as I mentioned, would be pushed out and just reconnected into the existing storm system that drains to one of the ponds on the course. Lastly, I just wanted to touch on those landscaping comments. Ravenwood primarily manages, plants, tends, does all their landscaping in-house through their groundskeeping staff and folks on staff, so the anticipation is, or the preference is to allow them to do that, transplanting as many of the shrubs and plants within those existing islands, which is landscaped very nicely, and to provide some pretty heavy screening to this area that is primarily, like I said, back of house for the cart service. We did look at several different configurations of islands and grade to try to gentle out some of those slopes, and shrinking islands to try to maintain a couple of the trees that were mentioned in the landscape consultant's notes or comments. We think that there'd be impact to the root structure, given the size of the canopies there, and again, trying to make sure that we establish shrubs and some screening at the cart or eye level is important to trying to screen some of that area. So with that, I'll turn it over to Joe to talk about the building, and then we can answer questions.
Thank you. Any chance we could get, there we go. Let's see how this works, all right, perfect. The existing exterior of Ravenwood is made up of a couple different materials, it has stucco along with some stone veneer accents throughout. The addition that you see here on the right-hand side, we're looking to maintain those same type of finishes to try to make a cohesive balance of the facility. You can see the materials on the right, this is the existing stone veneer that we're looking to match the stucco veneer that's on the majority of the facade. On the southwest side, where the basement comes down, we're looking to use a decorative CMU as a veneer on there, just for maintenance purposes and carts and those type of things, just seem to beat up on, on some softer materials. As this addition is pretty wide, it's about 60 or so feet, we tried to break up the massing of that building with a smaller gable where, is actually where the pro desk will reside, and tried to bring in some of that stone veneer around the corner that you can see here and on the eastern side as well, southeast side. We're looking to match the existing color of the windows with that black anodized look, adding some smaller details with lintels above the windows in ephes and, or stucco. And as Matt mentioned, as we started to move the checkerboard pieces around within the building, the, the bar grill area really became where the pro shop is today, and we wanted to create that indoor/outdoor feel, but also as kind of one of the requests by the owners that they, they wanted to create more of a covered golfer area when they're done golfing and gathering, and we just chose to extend the existing roof line out with a canopy and create kind of a rustic truss out there that kind of brought the interior color, wood color outdoors, to try to tie those two areas together. Roof lines themselves, we're going to stay underneath the existing eve line of, of the existing main roof, and I think the, the golf canopy is going to be in line with the existing overhang that's there today. So that's about it from the exterior, we'll, we'll take any questions.
Thanks. Board have any questions for the applicant? Joe? Al, starting with you.
Well, just a comment, I think the architectural renderings are consistent with the existing, so I'm fine with that, and I have no issues with what's being proposed.
Okay. Ken?
I don't have any issues either, I think it's well thought out, and I think if they comply with the review comments and the landscape comments, I think that's really good. I don't have anything more than that.
You buy enough time, Joe?
Yes.
I, I wonder if you would reiterate your comments about the islands relative to the two oak trees that Mr. Zaraski referenced?
Sure, yeah, so there's about, sorry, I printed this at a not-to-scale reduced size, so it's a little harder to read. There's about 11 feet of grade change from the parking area at the front where the staging is down to this lower level, and then it comes up about five to six feet more to the cart path that rings the existing practice green. So we've got to try to balance out those elevations to ensure deliveries, golf carts, folks walking with their bags, that kind of thing, and take out some of the steepness of the slope that was remaining. So as a result of that, as we try to get all these intersections to work and easily traversable, we end up cutting some grade and filling some grade to mound it up and berm it, and that would come in very close proximity to the trees that he's suggesting to save. And so, again, trying to establish a good shrub or screening presence at that eye level or cart level can be very difficult under larger canopy trees, especially if we have to modify the root system by some of the grading and pavement work that we need to do. So that's the reason why respectfully, we want to remove those and, and landscape them in such a way that provides the screening, and we have some doubts as to the long-term survivability with those impacts to the root structure.
What's the, what's the caliper size of the, the trees, are they?
I believe that those are about 16 inch, there's a 10 inch, we have two 10 inches and a 12 inch. If we go. If we go back to the site plan, I can show that to you, but the two in the existing island area are a 10 and a 12.
And his suggestion of a retaining wall to help with the grade is just not feasible in terms of intersection?
I believe that when we do that without significantly modifying the island again, which would create further impact outside of kind of the limits, the creation of that wall would impact that root structure because we'd actually have to cut down to establish that wall.
And is the balance of the, we'll call it a forest, similar sized oak trees as well?
They are. It's pretty expansive from this point all the way down to the road through that section, which is very small on here, but all of that area is pretty well wooded.
So the removal of those three trees is a small percentage of the oak trees that are currently there?
And not visible really from outside of right immediately adjacent to the clubhouse. From the road, you won't.
Okay, thank you. I was trying to visualize how that was all working this way. I needed a time.
No problem. Wes, any engineering comments, questions?
Yeah, we had, we had several engineering comments. LaBella's letter dated December 5th, 2022. Lighting, is there anything going on with lighting? Any new lighting proposed?
Yeah, thanks. I forgot to touch on that. So there'll be building mounted lighting for egress at the doorways. Anything else would be a low voltage landscape lighting. There's no, no proposed poles or anything like that.
Okay. Would you be able to provide catalog cut sheets for those building mounted fixtures?
Yeah, we can do that.
All right, thanks. Generator, you touched on this already, the generator and HVAC. Looks like your updated plans are going to show this specific location of where that's going to be. Patio drainage. Oh, so is, is the, is there going to be sheet flow from the proposed patio area discharging over top of the one on three slope? Is that?
There is, yeah. We're adding some additional details related to the stabilization of that slope, but that follows the existing drainage pattern. Right now, it's a concrete paper block with sand joints. We're anticipating a similar surface, although that hasn't been selected yet.
Okay. All right. Yeah, that's, that's the highlight of our comments. I suspect that the applicant, I don't think you put together a response letter yet to our comments?
We've drafted it, but wanted to see if there are any comments tonight. We, it's my understanding that county planning date with this date didn't overlap, so we're anticipating being tabled until those county comments come in, and then we'll be back at the next meeting was our understanding. So we can, we'll have response to comments back in, in advance.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm all set.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to address the board or the applicant for this application? Being none. I don't have a problem closing the public hearing if that's the board's pleasure.
I'll move to closing.
Second. Al seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed, all right. So public hearing's closed. As you said, we're still waiting for county comments, so we really don't have any more action on this. I like this, what you've done. I think the architecture is very nice. Certainly good to allow you to expand the business and, you know, make it a more functional facility in your mind and for your needs, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. See a lot of support from the board. Thanks.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Okay, second to last item on the agenda, last application for the evening. South Gate Hills Phase Three, we've seen this.
Sorry. Yes, I don't, I didn't catch the printer.
Link's got everything now, I think.
I was wondering why it went from like 2 to 17 and.
It's invisible.
Good evening, Link Sweetrock with BME Associates. And with me is Jerry Watkins from BRW of Greece LLC. We're here tonight for hopefully final subdivision approval for South Gate Hills Three. Since we last saw you for preliminary, we worked with the town to get the adjusted preliminary comments, get the preliminary plan signatures established. We got the road name approved of Woodland Way. I think we've worked to address all the town and staff comments. We've submitted easement descriptions for review and letter credits, so we're working on wrapping up all of our final items to hopefully get going into construction here. And we've received comments from LaBella, which I did provide written responses. They're sort of hot off the press. But I didn't see anything there that, that we won't be able to make sure we address. And I think the majority of the staff comments came back with no further comments at this time. So I think we've worked with the town through the process to try to make sure we've addressed everybody's comments and take everybody's input into consideration. We're looking for final approval tonight. There is one, one comment on Wes's letter that Jerry and I had just a quick comment on, which was the letter credit timing. The comment was about the letter credit needing to be posted before this planning board chair signature, which I just would ask to do whatever we need to do to lighten that up because we're going to need the plan signatures to get the bank to give us letter credit.
I think I pulled that from the Design and Construction Standards, so if that's not accurate.
We don't typically require them to post a letter credit before signatures. It's, it's before pre-construction.
Before pre-construction.
We want it, but not before planning board chairman's signature.
The bank won't.
We'll fix that.
The bank won't give us the money until we have this plan signed. So it's just a, that was just one of those that, go ahead, I know he wants to.
Until those plans are, excuse me, Jerry Watkins, until the plans are signed and recorded, the land's just a bunch of acres. There's no value to it, but once the plans are, have lots segregated, then the appraisal comes in so you can get the loan, so.
Yeah, we'll fix that.
We just, we just want to make sure that we'll provide the letter credit before we start construction, like we, like we typically do.
It sounds like it eased up on you then? Is that your phrase?
It was just, it caught me by surprise when I saw it. I just was like, ooh. And I brought it to his attention, to Jerry's attention, and just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page.
Okay. Any questions for Link? Al?
No.
Joe?
Oh, sir.
Matt?
We've discussed it.
Yeah, I think you've crossed these dotted i's, all that kind of stuff. It looks like you're providing a nice access facility for the hiking trails on the Auburn Trail as part of this project, which is always appreciated. I think we've addressed all the sidewalk issues that we had concerns over. So ties in well with the other development. Only thing you can't do is build anything until they fix up the sewer pump station up on Route 96.
That's still pending?
But it's under, yeah, it sounds like it's promising.
I can give you an update. It's also noted in our letter, right? Pump Station Seven is currently under construction, right? And the contract date for substantial completion is in March 2023. However, it's likely, it's highly likely that it'll be complete before then, right? Pumps are being delivered well in advance of what initially was anticipated. So it should be online within a couple of months.
Oh, they're not going to put up a house that fast anyway?
Probably not.
No, I think the time, the timing looks like it's working out from, you know, what I hear.
It's like it's favorable for that section road, so.
If I could just talk a little bit more to make this meeting go longer. So this is real, this is real minor.
I'm done talking.
Yeah. Link, this was in our letter, there's a crosswalk proposed. So there's two crosswalks proposed as part of this. I just want to bring this to the planning board's attention. One crosswalk is here on East Victor Road, providing a linkage to the sidewalk that's going to be installed, right? There's another crosswalk on the plans that's shown here, which really doesn't, to me, doesn't really serve much of a purpose. There's no pedestrian connection.
We took that trail off when, when we just, the town decided they didn't want to take, the town board decided they didn't want to take that land.
Perfect.
So we'll remove that crosswalk.
Perfect, yeah.
Yeah, it just seems like.
It just missed that between the coordination.
It seems like a thing you don't need to maintain is a crosswalk at a cul-de-sac.
Right. So yeah, our, our comments from December 7th, 2022, pretty, just crossing, crossing Ts, dotting Is. Nothing substantial or major here. They, the town, obviously, as you recall, included the secret process, issued a negative declaration prior to preliminary approval. So we're set with secret.
And we have a sidewalk network resulting from this, right? That's kind of connecting to?
That's correct. And at a recent town board meeting, their privilege of the floor, someone, a resident of South Gate Hills One, I believe, was in attendance at the town board meeting and had a concern about East Victor Road and how potentially it has outgrown its, its initial use, right, because of all the development that's going on here in the eastern side of Victor. And because her concern was about the shoulder width, right? The edge of shoulder, the edge of pavement and the fog line, and that there really wasn't a whole lot of area there for her to ride her bicycle. So it was brought up, and I think she was already aware that the sidewalk was going to go in between South Gate Two and the Auburn Trail, so that should, should help. And Brian Emelson really provided a nice response to Jack, and maybe the town board received that as well. They're, they're working on that, so.
So Vehicle and Traffic Law says bicycles belong on the road, not sidewalks.
Yeah.
So she's not going to be using it? Are we going to widen the road? I'm not clear.
Well, that's, I guess, I guess there's going to be some dialogue. I'm not sure what the follow-up has been or if there, if there's been anything yet between Mark Years and Brian Emelson. I think Brian and Emelson actually went out the next day and did some measurements. And because his question was about whether any of the restriping on East Victor Road has changed since they initially put in the Auburn Trail. I guess a segment of East Victor Road has an extra wide shoulder, right, to accommodate the Auburn Trail between Break of Day Road and where it connects over here on East Victor Road. So, yeah.
Stay tuned.
More to come.
But it sounds like the sidewalk at least is viewed as a positive, regardless of whether you're riding your bicycle on it or you're walking.
Yeah, it seems like it, right? Especially if you've got a pretty narrow shoulder, that, that should be helpful.
I'm sure the resident would walk her bicycle on the sidewalk. I would.
Yeah, if Al's sure about that, then I'm sure about that. Excuse me. But I think it's, I think it's, I'm glad that we had our discussions on that topic, as we did.
Okay. Any other comments from the board?
Good.
All right, cool. I think we have, we're prepared to get your approval this evening with a draft resolution. We don't have a public hearing closed on this.
Got all of them.
Right, that's what I thought. Okay, so we do have a resolution draft for you. South Gate Hills Three final, on East Victor Road, application three PS 2022. Whereas Planning Board made the following findings in fact, and there are lots of them, 17, now therefore be resolved that the final subdivision application of BRW Greece LLC major subdivision entitled South Gate Hills Three subdivision, drawn by BME Associates dated November 8th, 2022, received by the Planning Board November 8th, 2022. Planning Board application oh seven FS 2022 be approved with the following conditions. Items one and two are standard, three that comments, and these are conditions that must be met prior to chairman's signature. Three, the comments in the letter dated December 7th, 2022 from LaBella Associates to be addressed, and the town engineer confirms that the final subdivision plan set is suitable for planning board chair's signature. And number four, the comments from the Town of Victor Stormwater Program Manager dated November 23rd, 2022 be addressed. Conditions that are ongoing, standard conditions that must be adhered to. Number one is standard two, two-year maintenance bonds be, shall be provided by the developer to the town for all improvements to be offered to the town for dedication. Maintenance bonds shall be written by a surety license to do business in the state of New York, and they shall be in the amount of 10% of the final construction cost as determined by the engineer for the town. Number three, that approved subdivision maps, including conservation easements, lot consideration consolidations, and lot line adjustments shall be submitted in digital format, AutoCAD 2002 or latest version, effective January 1st, 2004, per Town Board Resolution 193 of June 23rd, 2003. That pre-construction meeting shall be held prior to start of construction. Before the Town of Victor Highway work permit be obtained, number, sorry, that's number five. Number six, that all conservation easement markers are shown on the final plans. Number seven, that no certificate of occupancy shall be issued for any building until such time that the town engineer confirms in writing that Pump Station Seven, PS Seven improvements have been completed and that PS Seven can accommodate sanitary flows from the project. And be it further resolved that the Planning Board Secretary forward a copy of this resolution to the applicant. So on that resolution, do I hear a motion for approval?
I'll move it.
That moves?
Second.
Al seconds, wanting to prolong the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose carry four zero. You guys are all set.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So last item on the agenda is a discussion. This is necessary for, at the end of each year, Planning Board, we need to discuss a new chairman position since it's the end of Ernie's term as chairman, and he can't proceed as chairman, having served two years under his current term minimum or maximum. So with that, I wanted to open the floor to see if there was any interest in someone taking on the chairmanship role. Al?
I'm interested in nominating you for chair.
Heard the interest. I didn't hear the interest of nominating yourself. Scott?
Joe seconded that.
Are you interested, Joe?
I will be glad to serve.
Is, is Ernie coming back?
Yes.
He is, so, so he'll be, would he be the assistant or the?
No, that was my next question. It's not something that the town board needs to vote on, but if, I would encourage someone else other than Ernie to take on the vice chairmanship, only because we really need to transition to other people's chairmanship down the road. One of our planning board bylaws is that everyone should be willing to serve as chairman slash vice chair. So.
I will.
Do you want to take on the vice chairmanship role? Anybody have a?
I have no objection.
There you go.
Really support that.
All right, so with that, I guess we will pass on to the town board that I would take on the chairmanship. And Joe has agreed to take on position as vice chair. Anything else we need to do there, Madam Secretary?
Architectural review still has?
Sure.
Okay.
Al, okay. All right.
Move to adjourn.
I hear a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
And there's a second, Al in favor?
Aye.
Let's do the discussion. Have a nice Christmas, Happy New Year, all of that.
Yeah, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Next meeting is in January?
Merry Christmas.
January 10th.